Took Wendy a minute, but she finally got it. Uh, thank you.
Wait, what? What's going on?
Are we ready to open? All right, can we wait a minute? Did you grab the firm sign up list?
I am, I am. That sounds like a plan to me.
Just thinking about that one.
Huh?
Hey, they're our new, uh, there's our new.
They have a lot at the beginning. They're not allowed to sign up here. Or, or should we?
Peachy. I'll write that up.
Everybody ready?
Peachy.
Grass, thanks.
I'm a peachy today.
All right, we'll call a meeting to order at 7:02. Agenda changes, any from the board? I have two. The first one is we need to be flexible with the executive session. Cheryl Brandt had car troubles on the way up here, so we will go, if there are no objections from the board, we're gonna move the executive session to whenever, shit, we'll get to here.
Cheryl with a C or an S?
S. H-E-R-Y-L.
And Brandt.
B-R-A-N-D-T.
Spelling in stereo.
Yay.
Okay. All right. Are there any other agenda changes?
You said you had two.
Yeah, that was only one.
I meant one. I'm being positive, I was thinking there were gonna be more. So I'll add fun to the agenda somewhere, that'll be my.
One for each eye.
Yeah, I don't have anything else, that's all I've got, I'm sorry. No further agenda changes, we'll move to public comment, any public comment?
No.
Move to minute approval.
I move minutes be approved as written.
We have a motion for the 19 March 2015 regular meeting minutes be approved as written. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion.
I would just like a minute to, I, since we received one yesterday, I actually haven't had a chance to look at all the stuff, so I apologize, but this is political, watching paint here. Try writing it. I prefer not to be doing.
This is a monthly dialogue between the two of you in office.
You know what's gonna happen next January, that's all I'm saying.
True.
Well, she's really good at editing, but that's pretty cool, the three little kids at once.
Uh huh.
That's awesome.
Some people make it.
Is this one license, is that one? Yes.
Molly is like the master of multitasking, she's got all six kids.
Your arms get really long when you ask.
Uh huh. All right, discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Voucher review.
I would give the re-burn accepted offer, 6624 through 6654, for a amount of $22,887.51 payroll transfers from M&amp;L account to payroll account of $41,081.90.
So I have a motion to accept the vouchers 6624 through 6654 for the amount of $22,887.51 and M&amp;L payroll accounts of $41,081.90. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Shannon's first.
Yes, ma'am?
I do have a couple of questions. Question on what it is. CO2 food grade micro balls.
Thank you.
It's for, it's carbon dioxide for.
Oh, it's a compressed gas cylinder for the full, full materials, yeah, that makes sense.
Food grade, okay. Means it doesn't hurt us.
That's, that's, that's on.
Okay, that's.
I'll let you down on the labels.
I was actually wondering, it's the same thing, so, okay, fantastic. So what did Baron Hayden do to the boiler, by the way?
The one that they just did recently?
Uh huh. Cost a lot of money. I assume they fixed it, but do we know?
Matt has just seen the sheet from them, I asked him for it.
So we don't know what Baron did.
He, he came in and he said there were some, all these things, like there were some issues in my address. I says, does Matt know what he did? Yes.
Okay. Have Matt send an email to the commissioners, just saying.
I'll have to send out that stuff, yes.
Perfect, thank you very much. Since that's high on our capital improvement list, we kinda wanna know what's going on, so that'd be great, thank you very much.
I'll allocate them to that.
And then.
So, so you're on the health insurance, the $23,000 health insurance, here's that company, since we were just talking about this this week, is that, is that the same payment every month?
Joanne. Um, not for this one, because we're taking out, um, one person. But it'll, it'll be us this month.
So, okay, so I have to ask, and you can stop me, Sean, if you.
No, go for it.
Have, have we found out, did we find out this week, whether that is the 90% for the employees, 50% for the spouses, because that, that is going to be, we have to find something.
When I spoke with, when I spoke with Cummings and, well, Cummings and Fraser people, and.
Who's Cummings and Fraser?
Their, our insurance program.
Okay.
And they said that our contract was 100%.
Oh.
The district pay.
For, for employees?
For employees.
What about the spouses?
It's 90, 100% for employees, none for the spouses.
None for the spouses.
Then we have a serious.
None or 19? None, none.
We have a serious problem.
Okay, so we need to change it, okay, we'll address it at a different point.
Like a serious.
Okay.
But I think we need to understand what the financial impact of that is, as we.
How do we get through that?
Well, I, while I understand your point, I think part of it is, if we're looking at trying to balance a budget and then make changes, we need to understand what those financial impacts are, so that we can ensure that the numbers at the end balance, right?
Well, not all of that, but, I mean, we, we, we may be going back to a certain point, because I don't know how, how we as a board, in January 27th of 2014, voted to give this benefit to these employees, and now, at what point in time did that fall off? Was it January 2015? If that's the case, then we don't have three months where we really need to go back and reimburse those employees, if they paid out the pocket expense for their, for their spouses or children.
Can I, I'm gonna ask that, we stop and we table that towards.
Thank you.
When that comes up?
Thank you.
All right, so all we need to know for right now is the 22.
Thank you.
Yep, 2283 is our monthly charge currently for Health, United Health, correct? Is it 22 or 23? 2832, how about 283205? Okay.
We pay that monthly for insurance?
Yes.
Yes.
So are the, are the reimbursement checks, are those basically would be money from one account to another, is that effectively what that is? Okay, that's what I assumed. Let's see, those all add up. Is there a reason why we have two paychecks charged to one month?
One and, yes, because there's two pay periods a month.
It's cost us 370 some odd dollars per pay period to have them do our paychecks to our payroll.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess the strange thing to me is that they're only a week apart, I'm not, I'm not questioning that, that the charges are, well, it just seems strange then, if it's, if it's based on two pay periods, wouldn't they be two weeks apart?
Well, it comes with, the bill comes with the week after. So, and then, the vouchers actually go out the week after, because depending on what pay period it is, that I can't pay it, that it'll go off all the way, which will make it closer to that pay period.
Thank you, it just, it helps them.
I have a question going on to the, are we gonna talk about the budget?
No, we need to talk about the, no, stop, we need to talk about the vouchers. The motion on the board right now.
Okay.
It's for the vouchers and the M&amp;L accounts.
Okay.
So that's what we need to talk about. Thank you.
Sorry, the, there are the three things on the voucher report for March 2015, and there are reimburse, the swim meet, swim rag, meat entry fees, and this is all money that we, we pay out initially and then the parents pay back, correct?
That's the whole.
And where.
Well, that's the expectation, yes.
So where, where will that, where will we see that that's inputted back? Where does that get shown as, yep, this money was paid?
That will show as PNS dues and meat fees.
Which is.
But so, it's basically not something that we're gonna see in any, this is all just money expended, okay. The Tracers info specialist, $25, did we actually ask something, or we keep them on a retainer for $25 a month to do this? So, back in February, who did we, who did we do a thing on?
Tracers, we must run a background check for every employee that we hire, for one.
Okay.
So we have a monthly fee.
Oh, so we do pay a month, okay.
We pay monthly fee, and then there's a nominal fee when you actually run a check, depending on how many places you're looking for, and usually that fee is anywhere from $0.25 to $1, depending on how much you run.
Okay. Is it, and is it, if you don't pay the, the $25?
They catch it out. So it's, it's $25.
Subscription.
It's a subscription, yeah, it's $25, and they're very thorough, so that's one of the reasons that we use them, is because of their very outstanding reputation, is providing thorough background checks that cover all 50 states. Well, I mean, otherwise, we would have to pay per request, and it can be up to $10 per request, and if we have six or seven employees in a month that we hire, which sometimes happens in the summer, those fees can go up substantially. So with Tracers, we're, we're paying substantially less overall, and getting a better, getting a much better background report as a result.
So we hire more than 25 people a year?
No, we do not hire more than 25 people a year, we probably hire five to 10 people a year.
At $25 a month, it sounds like $10 a pop is less money.
Well, but the one that we were using before was Washington State Patrol, and Washington State Patrol only covers background checks in Washington state, so if we were going to check, let's say, Oregon, California, Montana, et cetera, we would have to pay for those states as well. Whereas Tracers were able to cover all 50 states for one price, instead of paying $10 for each state. So if I have somebody that's been military, they've traveled across the US and they've been, and I do have several military people that work here, I know of somebody that worked in Virginia and California, and, you know, wherever they, once they turned 18, wherever they worked, have to run those background checks. And I could pay up to $10 per state when I run those background checks, so I might have to be running a background check on somebody for $40 per person, which we don't wanna do, it's too much.
Okay.
And they don't always, the, the state patrol background checks do not always match everything, they're very broad, and we've run, we've run, I ran myself, just out of curiosity, using this, knowing that I had a traffic ticket on my record, Washington State Patrol did not come up, because I got the ticket from Oregon, when I ran on Tracers, it came up. So, yeah, we know that it's a much more thorough. And we had one employee that when we ran Washington State Patrol, one potential employee, we ran Washington State Patrol, their record came up clean, we ran them through Tracers, and we found six pages of records from other states. So, we're trying, and we think that in protecting the district, that this is the best route to go.
Okay. Do we know what supplyhouse.com and PPC communications, what those consisted of?
PPC is E-Sol, which is our.
Okay. Supply House, the one written board on that, E-Sol. It is chemicals, I believe.
Do I see chemicals on the voucher?
Could, could we, I, I would be most appreciative if we could, I mean, I think part of the checks and balances is to have a second set of eyes on things, I'm not, this is nothing to do with that, it's just more of a process, so if we don't know what it is, can we just find out what it is?
Sure.
Okay. I mean, it would just be helpful, it's, Supply House is very general, I know that every time his name comes up, we go, I think it's chemicals, and I, as much as I'm like comfortable with that, it really actually like to know that somebody else has had their eyes on, here's what we bought, okay. I mean, especially at, you know, well, it doesn't matter the amount, but, you know, living at $650, like, it doesn't, the amount doesn't matter.
No, whether it's 600 or 600.
It just seems like there should be a cross verification of some sort, if, if we could.
Do you want it?
If you can have it, have it, great, if not, that's okay, but I just, yeah, we, we, sometimes it's hard to just see from here, we have the invoices, they're all spelled out, of course. And, and that's exactly, you know what, for me, it's less, it's less about me knowing the exact things that were on there, as opposed to saying, yeah, we know that was chemicals.
Cool.
You know what I mean, that's, that's what I'd be worried about.
Absolutely.
Um, thank you.
Hey, Ericson?
Yes, sir.
Sheriff, come on, let's call it back, please, the citizens' school.
Oh, it is for the Holland happening here, and the, and the parade entry fee.
So we're looking ready.
We are. We are.
Is, is Coach Taylor going to be there?
Um, he's not sure whether he will be there, but we, he is encouraging his swimmers to be there and help us with the parade and the booth and handing things out, so, a bunch of them are really excited for that.
Cool.
He's planning on having them help decorate floats and trucks.
Cool.
Oh, yeah, and, you know, the kids love doing it every year, they, they start asking about it first of April.
Cool.
Yep, so we're really excited to get going on it.
Yeah.
You feel comfortable moving, or are you gonna wait for Joanne?
I, you know what, I feel comfortable moving forward, I would just like to see, again, if, if Joanne were you, if someone said, it's pool chemicals, then I believe that that was verified.
Not 100% sure, so I think it's good that we checked.
Correct, yep.
All right. While we're waiting for Joanne, if there are no other questions, comments or concerns, Steve?
No.
Stan Su?
No.
Bless you. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. All right, unfinished business, the new director search is up first.
Well, do you wanna know what we are on?
I would like to.
All right, so Commissioner Holly and myself, we sent several emails, and we got together twice over this past month, there were 13 applicants for the resume, and I must say, I mean, I was involved with the last go on, I was very impressed, I personally, with the talent pool of the applicants, we were very good with it, too. With that said, we have brought the number down to six, which was what you tasked, tasked us to do, and that's where we are at this point in time. And what Commissioner Holly, I think that she had sent it out to, to you guys.
I did.
She came up with, well, we did, she did a lot of the work, and then she asked me what I thought, and I thought it was a wonderful idea, and it was basically a graded scale, and what we looked at was, and I think that you all got that, the experience in aquatic facility, the experience in management, leadership, experience in government organization, experience in physical planning, dealing with the public customer service, experience in strategic planning, and then experience with recreational programs other than aquatic, and that's kind of what we tried to look, look for, the funny thing was, we did them separately, and although our scores were different, the results were amazingly the same, right, if you look at that top six, the top five were spot on, and then, the same top five, essentially.
Yeah.
And then, we, and then we had agreed on the sixth together, and so we need direction from the board on how to proceed. One thing I would like to bring up, if I could, because we talked about last time how we did it, and, and I was wrong on one thing, Commissioner, former Commissioner McDougal and I took that, that number, and it went against the limits of another dozen, down to six, and then we passed it off, I wanna think, Sean, it was to Commissioner, former Commissioner Walton and yourself, possibly, and then you guys took it down to that final two. I personally would like to recommend that you consider that this time, because to have two more commissioners look at that, so that way, in the end, you will have had four commissioners with input on, on, on the, on the, on the, is that making sense? And, and I would even like to, to look at possibly interviewing three in the end versus two, let's just.
But isn't that, that's part of, part of the motion was to let you and subcommittee determine what the right number was, for the, if you will, then I, then the final was that you guys would go back.
So are you, are you saying that then the Commissioner Holly and I, then we should get back together and narrow this down to three?
No.
Okay.
The way the motion was read, let me rewrite.
Okay.
Re-read it?
Re-read it, yes.
Aren't you glad I keep such exact minutes?
I am very happy you do. Commissioner Singleton moved that the director search subcommittee review resumes, narrow it down to the strongest visible viable candidates. No specific number, that they engage members of the senior staff and the public to interview and evaluate, and thus narrow it down to the top two or three candidates for full board, district board interview, review, and selection. So, if you've narrowed it down to seven.
Six.
Six, and you want to now engage the senior staff and the public, member, any interest, do we get any interest? Let me now interrupt and say, director, do we get any interest? We got no interest from the public to help us with the process, which is fine, so I would then say, would, would you're suggesting is that two, you continue?
Well, no, my concern, it's not only a concern, but it's, it's a thought.
Hmm.
You know, because I'm not concerned that Commissioner Holly and I could bring it down to that two or three, but the thought was that this would engage two more commissioners, either yourself and Commissioner Singleton, or, or Commissioner Smith and Commissioner Singleton, that the two of them, or the two of you, could then look at that, and you also have some, some input on that, that final two or three.
Because we, we have, and the way that we waited, scored them, we have, you know, easily, we can pick up the top two to three candidates.
We should.
And we already have, we could tell you tonight, who we think, the two of us think it is, but, and I agree with Steve, and he remembered this is how it happened, and we didn't remember it last meeting, that with two other commissioners taking a look at, now less, but the five candidates, and using either, you can either use the list that we came up with, or a different skill identifier list, and you wait them, and then you'll come up with, I think you're probably gonna come up with.
Well, remember, we're gonna ask the senior staff also to look at that, so, that was also part of that.
Yeah, I personally.
It just seemed to do it the other way around.
I personally would like to look at, at ending, I don't know, how we would handle that motion.
I actually just put down a note, go ahead.
I, I honestly, at this point, really think that we should, and, and I hope no one's disrespecting others, I don't think it's a good idea to engage the senior staff on this final pool of candidates, I think that that is not a good thing.
Okay.
Wait, so you're saying that you don't want their input through the process at all, or you're saying, okay.
I do not, I do, and there are reasons I believe that way, and we could go into detail on that, but I, I don't know that it's, it's the time or place to, I just don't, I don't know if I'm allowed to say, you know.
Okay. There could be a potential conflict.
There could be a, you know, a very, very.
Got it.
Very much so, yeah.
All right, I, I need to, and I'll be quite honest, I need to look at Robert's rules, because the good thing is that I can appoint the subcommittee, I don't know if I can change a subcommittee once I have the plan.
Okay.
So.
Can you disband us and form a.
We could do, we could do another motion, we could do another motion, which would be an easy fix, that, that is one way to fix it.
We have, we have rated these, Sean, one through six, the two of us, I mean, we have that right now, if you guys wanted to move forward, but, yeah.
Well, the next part of the motion that was passed is that you engage members of the senior staff and the public to interview and evaluate, and thus narrow it down to the top two, two, two or three candidates, two, two, three, pardon me, for full district interview, review, and selection. Now, I know there could be a potential conflict of interest, since it doesn't name specific staff members, you would be able to choose from the senior staff, the head coach, the maintenance supervisor.
I'll make a new motion.
Or if you wanna make a new motion, we can definitely amend it, that's up to you two. I get what you're saying about having more eyes on it, I think that's a good thing.
I, I get that, and I'm, I'm assuming I understand the inference, but, but I think the thing we have to remember is that including the senior staff was, in fact, a different way of getting more eyes on it, which is part of, I, I understand what you're saying. I, I personally just subscribe to people having their input, it doesn't mean that, so, so just as you waited on this, just as you waited things differently, that input can also be waited and considered, I, I personally, I value an organization where people's inputs are taken, I, I do, I, I recognize that, that maybe there are reasons why we think in this case that would not, I, I don't know if you're saying you think it wouldn't be productive, I'm not sure, I, I don't wanna put words in anyone's mouth, but.
If I were to go back to the way it was done before, and this is just my opinion, this is, once you did not attack on the senior staff, I think that it muddied the water last time, I truly do. When I look back at when we put the former commission, our former director and the other candidate, that when their input came in, I honestly do think it muddied things, that I don't think we needed their input on that, and, and, yeah.
And I guess I have two responses to that, one is, if this is the criteria, then I don't, I honestly don't see the harm in saying, can you have a discussion with these people or whatever, and do this exact same thing, and give it back to us, it doesn't mean how you're receiving input and how you process it is up to you guys, so that's one thing. The other one is, this is why I feel strongly about this, I, I do value a workplace where people have a say, I, I do value that.
You're saying why?
Well, but, but, well, I, I do value that, though, and, and I think if we're trying to say that we want this to be a good place to work, then I think we have to say that we value, that, that we wanna hear what they have to say, it, it may not mean that the decision goes the way that one person or another person wants it to, but that we value their opinion.
I think the way you do that, though, is by, by, you know, getting together with them and actually ask them, what do they look for in supervising, things that they're looking for, things that they respect, things that they jam their nerves, and to understand that, take that stuff into consideration when you're interviewing these candidates. candidates, I don't know that having them involved with every single, you know, with these six people looking at them, you know, I don't know that that brings the value in my, my thought pattern, does it?
Then I think.
I'm going to interrupt, I'm going to stop. And everybody's had a chance to say. Here's the good part, there's already a motion that was voted on unanimously and passed. The good thing is, it says that they engage members of the senior staff and the public to interview and evaluate. It does not say in the motion that members of the senior staff and the public interview and evaluate, it just says engage them. So, how you feel you engage them has been left up to you. I gave you no direction besides engage them and come back to us with the top two, two, three.
Okay, and may I ask you a question, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So what if Commissioner Holly and I, over this week, the end of next week, we have it down to three? And then, we will provide those opinions to, how do we do it?
You, that's a good question. And here's how we will move forward. If you narrow it down after you engage members of the senior staff and the public.
Yes, we will.
Then you narrow it down to the top two to three to interview and evaluate. Then we said, we as a, as a board, the full board will interview, review, and make a selection. So, if that's done in the next two weeks, I need an email from one of you, at which time I will call for a special meeting, which we will, the special meeting will be to interview and we'll open it in public meeting as per the OP, Open Public Meeting Act. We'll then go immediately into executive session because we're interviewing a candidate. And during the closed session, the full board will interview that candidate, will open and close as we have to by the OPMA. And of course, any decision will have to be discussed in an open public meeting. Right, okay?
So, we may have up to three special meetings, if scheduling.
For three different interviews, we may have three special meetings. That is correct, that's a valid question, yes. So, in the next two, two weeks, if you feel that's an appropriate time, please, whenever it's done, please get back to me.
I think, I think we can easily do that.
By the end of the month.
Yeah.
Well, and then the next question would be, these, these six, should they be notified that these six people are on this, this next step of this?
I would say we would, we would need to wait until we're down to the top three. If you're going to narrow it down to three.
The reason I was concerned is because I know one, I know the earliest one I saw was like the third week of January or something, oh my goodness.
We would, I've sent, I've already sent one email out, and I would be more than happy to send another one out, but I'd like to do it when we've narrowed it down to the top three. And then I can send thank you, you know, thank you however, comma, you know, and then I can say, send the other emails saying, yes.
And I don't need to, you know, to take this further down the road, but when we look at speaking to the public, members of the public, can we do it as individuals? Do we do it to?
However you do it, it was pretty broad, the direction that we give.
Are we allowed to share resume? Because I don't know, are we allowed to do?
There's going to be PII on a resume that you can't, I was about to say, I don't think you can share.
So I don't know how much, and that's the thing, I don't know how much we can actually share.
And here's the good news, we didn't have any public interest. So I would say, probably not engage the public at all. And because we had nobody.
Well, isn't it the same thing with senior staff? Are we allowed to show resumes to senior staff? Because once again, it's a.
I would suggest that your comment you made earlier about what is it you seek in a leader?
Thank you.
I like that.
Is probably more appropriate than sharing a resume at this point, since we don't have a member of the senior staff assigned to the subcommittee.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
May I ask a member of the audience a question?
If it's going to be Carolyn, I would hope you would.
Do you use that for, this is going in the right direction, as far as the two of us continuing down this road, narrowing it to the field of duty? Or do you think there would be a better way?
I think if you have like measurable criteria, like you're starting from the job description, and then you have the qualities and experience that you're seeking, and you're ranking the candidates based on objective measurable information as opposed to hearsay or whatever else, what I know about them. And I, I would have to say that I would agree that the staff, it's a little bit difficult to sort of speak, I can talk to you about who I would like to work, you know, the qualities of leader I would like to work for. But being able to look and kind of apply it in the process is why you engage that team. And again, it's not because they're selecting the person, but they're going to give that same objective feedback. And maybe in the top three that you all narrowed down to, I think, I think it'd be invaluable. And for them to know, you know, gosh, this was the pool, and the commission selected this individual, and I can see why, you know, the others, so they're applying through that process. It honors them, and it honors the work that they do.
So you're saying that they should, the senior staff that we select should look at the resumes and grade them the same way we did?
Just the top candidates, those top three that you narrowed down to. So if I just take that deep down to the really key, and give them a tool, give them something to give it back to, and not just highlight them or whatever. And I'll tell you, as a candidate, you want to, when you get to the interview process for those, you know, you really want to know that this becomes their work team believable. And I want a corporate team that I can get a chance to take these things into my life, and get a sense of how I felt about that dynamic and connections on the board.
So maybe prior to the interview by the full board, a meeting with the senior staff prior to the interview would be appropriate. And for the record, if I may, Ms. Carolyn Peap was the one that answered the question, and she is a very experienced HR specialist, and that's why Commissioner Hoffman asked her, I just wanted to say that for the record, that's okay?
Yeah, thank you, Carolyn.
And we all have a copy of the metrics we're using to grade the candidates with, and you're going to continue to use that matrix.
Did you have anything you wanted to add, any issues? I basically took the job description out of, right out of the handbook, I added a couple of things that I knew that was a problem for us, that I, and then I, and Steve and I talked about it, and I weighted the things that I thought were the most important and things were less important, you know, and it turned out being, actually, I thought a good tool.
We've used similar tools in the past, and I thought that covered all the priorities and what qualities.
Well, if the two of you are fine, that's what we should do.
Okay, so we'll move forward, and two weeks, we'll hear back from the subcommittee, Commissioner Holly and Commissioner Hoffman. Excellent. Any further discussion? All right, budget discussion. Now, Steve, you may proceed with your question.
Actually, I was thinking about this on the way in. Unfortunately, Mr. Craig Carlson left, he left in December. Two years later, Director Walker left in December, Gino left in December, and it's like, you know, when budgets are happening, leadership was leaving, and it's, it's been this.
It's rough.
Yeah. So I look back at the minutes, and December of 2013, December 2013, that is when, we have a special meeting, I think it was December 27th, and that's when we voted to approve the insurance. There was all the talk about the Affordable Care Act and all of that stuff was going on. And when we finally made a vote on, and it showed me in the minutes, it was 90% for the employees, 50% for spouses and children. And then, they came back, and Mrs. Peap and Nicole McKinnon at the time, were, they were just furious, they're trying to get that thing worked out, and then the insurance company came back, and they changed the policies. So we have a special meeting at the end of January, and what we did is we revoted, basically, on that. And we said, yes, 90% for the employees, and 50% for spouses and their children. So I would assume that all of 2014, that's the pattern that we probably followed. I would love to know when that fell away, when we went away from, or did we ever?
So was it supposed to be, when you, do you remember when you voted on it was supposed to happen instantaneously? When was that supposed to take effect?
It was right then, because the insurance company, it was so important, they didn't get it done now because we're breaking the law.
Okay.
Because we had X amount of employees, the Affordable Care Act, it already went into effect, and we were like on that line, if I remember right, Carolyn, if, I mean, if you don't get it done now, you broke the law, I think, because, so we looked at all employees who made over, who worked over 30 hours a week, I believe. And anyway, and all the particulars were actually in that, the minutes, where it talked about, you know, how many employees and all of that.
So what we need to do, is we need to contact the insurance company.
Yes.
And find out why we don't have a plan that has 90, 50 first.
That would be the first thing.
And then, we'll go from there. So next, we'll add it to, we'll add it to old business for next month, will that work?
It will, yes.
Unless we need to have a special meeting to correct it, but let's, let's contact the insurance company, find out what the policy options are, and why we have the policy that we have. Gino's not here to answer these questions. So, we need to find out why we have what we have, and what's the history behind our policy, I guess, would be the best thing to do. Is that, is that okay with you, Commissioner Hoffman?
Yeah, because, and I think we all, the picture's pretty clear, if we said we're confused somehow, we have a sound weird, we've got to make it right, I believe, so. Yeah, I don't know, Shane, I don't know. It would be easy to find out.
Yep. We'll, we'll find out what happened from the insurance company.
See, what I'm confused is Matt, Matt the other day said that he thought that the pool was paying 50% of his spouse, that's what he said. So that's why at some point in time, I really believe it busted, because Matt thought it was, that's what he said.
And that's what all of us have been led to understand, is that it was in 1910 and the 5050. And so, we're on it, we'll look into it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. When I find out, I'll send you an email.
Thank you very much.
All right.
So, this will be on the agenda?
This will be new business, it'll be a separate agenda item next month?
Thank you very much.
All right. Is that good? Steve?
May, may, Mrs. Peap?
Yes, please.
I hope you remember when we talked about it, that it was a small public employer, and this was, you didn't have, you had an executive director, I just remember.
That's.
Interception of all.
We did not have a director at the time, we did not.
So, and I, what I suggested is, I would start now, or maybe not this early, that healthcare exchange is going to have discounted, potentially, reports, and a small public employer was sort of the, I haven't had a relationship with a group, but I would, and it's not you guys have your new director, you should research on this, because you can get the trusty, the out of there, but they're always on there. So, there's just a lot of resources out there, I think that comes out of here.
I do remember this, yeah.
But definitely look into it. And remember that there's going to be the basic plan design, and that whatever your employee handle or policy dictates, that you will provide extra benefits for your employees. So, it's, and then you have an employee under a contract, so the benefits are outlined, so they're, you're kind of looking at three different things that will define what that cost share is on your benefit package.
Did you guys understand that? Cool, very good. Thank you.
Separate budgeted, any other, any further budget issues? We've got the budget in front of us, I guess I'll start with this.
We need copies for you guys.
This is a copy of the new assumptions and projected revenues and expenses for the rest of the, the remainder of the year.
Next to it is the 2014, so that you guys can compare and contrast of it as well.
So that's the previous, and 2015 is the one that we're working with right now.
Now, what we have not added in here yet are some of these, the vacation pay, retirement benefits. We have not added these in yet because we are still working with, as you've seen, the insurance stuff. Once we know those numbers, we'll be able to plug those in. We'll get those from our insurance brokers, and I like the idea of shopping around a little bit, possibly, as well. But what you have here is what was projected in 2015. Do you remember if you have that one added up? Can I see the one?
So page one is revenue, and pages two, three, and four are expenses.
That is correct, just trying to clarify.
Oh, there it is.
I see it, it's way down there, and it's one.
Clarify something for me.
Of course.
2015 revenue projection. So it's 2015, what was approved?
What, so the first column, you're right, the first column is that's what, that's what the budget reflects.
Is correct.
The one from last year.
Yes.
Well, the current approved budget.
The 2015 revenue is the current approved.
Okay.
The projection is the new figures that we put together at a workshop and that the staff put together. Yes, sir. The 2014 review and received was the previous budget. Yes, sir. So, with the new projected budget, the new projected revenue for 2015 is $9,64,417. And looking at the new projected budget.
Expenses.
Expenses, pardon me. We have $961,925 without medical and vacation time.
Actually, medical is in there.
Medical is in there, thank you.
That's just missing any potential election stuff, vacation pay for the director, aquatic director, and retirement for the head coach.
And the election stuff would go to next year's budget, will have to be factored in, but I did say at the budget meeting, I would find out how much. And for future planning, and for the board's information, they don't go by position, they go by items. So last time, we had three board seats plus a levy on the item, on the ballot, it's a big word for me. And because we had four items on the ballot, it cost us $11,000.
Wow.
So, that's correct.
We're going to have five.
So, what Michelle from the Island County Auditor's Office said, do not quote her, quote me on this, and I won't, she said.
For planning purposes only.
Yeah, for planning purposes only, because postage, she did not add in postage, and she does not know how much postage will count. She says, I would go, I would start at 15. So, for next year's budget, start at 15. But that, as Julie just said, we do not have to worry about that 15,000 for this year, because if we amend the current budget, we don't have to worry about that, I should say.
Does, do these expenses include the 30,000 to put back into reserves?
So I just have to go back to medical. If this $22,000 that I suggested for 2013 is only covering employee and not the spouse and kids, it's going to be significantly more than that.
So if this $22,000 number assumes that we're paying 100% of premiums for four people for a total of twelve months, now we have, right now, we have three that we're paying for, and one we anticipate will drop off. So that fourth person that's counted in there right now, when I calculated that, is actually if we were paying 100% for.
It's worst-case assumption, is what you're saying.
Not paying for their spouses or nothing.
No, and it also does not include their contribution, when we do go to like the 1910, which we anticipated. So we probably will need to tweak it a little bit, but maybe not as much as you're thinking.
Well, maybe figure the director, who may be hiring like the past director, may need insurance, right? You can't assume that that person's going to be.
And that's part of the four, though.
That's part of the four, yeah. That's why we let it hit the four, even though we had one employee that was taking insurance that left, and then handled one, yet will drop off. So we love a little extra there.
And one of your employees just had a child, so I'm just.
And that's taken into consideration.
What the child did. I mean, we're not taking spouses or kids into consideration at all in this number.
We're not taking spouses or kids into consideration, however, we have done this based on four people, and in actuality, right now, we are only paying three.
But you're going to be paying a fourth one very soon, possibly, right?
And we, we did this based on 12 months, and we are. Yeah, and we, but we did this based on twelve months, and we are right now four months in, probably will be five months before we end up having to pay this, that extra person, so we, we took that into consideration as well.
Did you understand what I'm saying?
I did, absolutely did.
So for the past four months, we've paid for how many?
We've paid, we had, well, one, one dropped off in January, so we've been paying three, four for one month, and three for three months.
And even though, um, Cummings Frazier told us that we're not paying anything towards spouse, or towards spouse, so they're paying one hundred percent, Matt, it's still only been having about fifty percent of hers deducted from his checks for his spouse, so I think some of that would have to factor in, too. So medical may really need a little bit of an adjustment.
Yeah, I just don't think that until we have all the facts at hand, we can, we can put anything on it. I mean, it's just, it's just a number until you really know, to me.
So we can want more clarification on this next month.
And I, and I also think that, you know, it's, it's a clarification on that and making sure that it is indeed the ninety-ten and the fifty-fifty. Once we know that for certain, we'll be able to be a little bit more accurate with that.
Definitely.
So are we, um, in, in the interest of having confidence in the numbers, which is the whole point of that, um, can we expect that, um, well, I don't know, anybody say it, the next revision will have the, somewhere we have to figure out where that, that thirty thousand is coming from.
Mm-hmm.
And this would be the most logical time to do it because other than, because then if we don't, then we, oh, well, we'll just wait for something grand to happen, and then we'll, I mean, it's just, it's one of those, like, there, we can't plan for that. So if we could work that in here, I, I think we have to. And right now it's twenty-six thousand, I didn't take the whole thirty.
Okay.
So, um, I would go, I would just go for, go for the thirty. I would, I, I would, because I think, I think, I mean, even then, four thousand dollars, if, at the budget we're looking at, um, four thousand dollars is one half of one percent, and it kind of, does that give us a lot of give?
No, not really.
No, it doesn't give us much give at all.
Because you don't, you don't have the six thousand for Matt's computer software upgrade so that he doesn't have to manually, that's not in here, is it, or is it?
Mm-hmm.
I don't see it under technology.
No.
So that's another six thousand dollars that.
Sixty-five hundred.
Sixty-five hundred, that, you know, I would want that in here because we, you know.
Well, next month we will do, we'll have a little bit more work done on it, and we'll be able to give you some more, some more answers.
Thank you for all the input.
Oh, absolutely.
Yes.
I think we're just trying to make sure, again, as we said in the last budget meeting, that when we modify it, that we feel confident with what we're changing it to.
I look at Cascade Natural Gas, and that one just shocks me.
Isn't that just.
That's what the travel is before.
Absolutely.
Let's push it.
And the cascade is, I think I just did a five percent multiplier to get that number, over what it gave last year.
And in the conversation that I had with them earlier in the week, that was pretty much what they had been saying as well, look at three to five percent.
And we did the same thing with the endurance number for the insurance.
Yep, we took a higher number. Okay, it would be really helpful moving forward if we could just footnote that sort of stuff, because things like that, if, if we could see them, review them, and kind of go, you know, instead of us doing this dialogue in terms of where'd you get this, where'd you get this, it would just be super helpful, because I'd go, oh, okay, well, that's what they did there, perhaps it means then we have questions like, why'd you pick five percent? Um, but I think we'd at least understand there's a basis for it, and I, for me personally, my confidence in that number raises when I understand that there's a basis for it. And we, we shoot, we shoot high on those.
And I think also with the transparency in government, and.
Absolutely.
It would be even better just to put those finite notes and details in there, that way when somebody wants to look, especially with the levy coming up.
And that's quite honestly not the standard, I just did not, every now and then just like.
No, and, and we understand you're already maxed, trust me, we've seen how much you guys, the three of you have worked your tails off.
Absolutely.
Thank you very, very much.
Yes.
And I understand that that's more to put on your plate, but I, I appreciate what, what, what you're doing and the attention to detail that we're seeing in here, this is much better, so thank you. And it will help us next month to maybe move forward with this process. Okay.
Hopefully we'll be able to get some of these numbers even before the next meeting, and you guys would get them well in advance, and that you're able to look at them and give us some feedback, and by the time we have the next meeting, we've had a little feedback.
And maybe we can.
Keep ripping, yeah.
Thank you. Further questions on the new budget that we're looking at for next month?
I just have a, perhaps this should have been a board issue question, but, um, is, is there a reason why we cannot receive some things piecemeal, so?
No.
Okay. I, I personally would, um, I, I feel like what we have going on right now is, it's kind of a single point of failure deal, that, um, hey, guess what, you get everything twenty-eight hours in advance, you know, in advance, and I'm, I'm not knocking anybody, because I know you're all working hard, but I know that there are some pieces of this.
That were done.
That were done, or could have been forwarded, you know, the, the thing from the county, the, the statement.
All those could have been ages ago.
Right, and, and I, while I recognize that for this meeting, it's in a packet and, and sent out to everyone at a certain time, um, I would certainly be, feel more prepared and feel like we could more move forward, I would be able to ask questions ahead of time, um, I would just love it if we didn't do that to ourselves.
If you guys would like them as we get them, we're more than happy to do that.
A week before, give us what you got, and then saying, here's what else is coming, and, you know, so two weeks before, remind me.
And see, I would say for things like, for me, for things like the, um, when we get the report from the county, I'm not sure why it's not just forwarded to us. Um, I, I'm not saying that you, that anyone's done anything wrong, I just, I think it could just be forwarded to us.
They literally got it two days ago.
Okay, but, but, and, and I'm fine, it's just, to me, it doesn't have to be part of a larger packet, it's, it's about the flow of information, and I feel like we're stopping up the drain a little bit, um, and, and I, again, I, I think it would be easier on you guys, because there's this, less stress about this, the package, hey, there, we have that, they have that, they have that, um.
He hasn't.
Well, I, I haven't looked at anything, I'm, to be quite honest with you, I haven't looked at anything, because I, I don't have time to just say, you know what, I'm not going to do anything the day before the meeting, um, because I'm going to just look at my packet. And, and I want to come here prepared, and I want to have respect for you and the work that you've done, for the people who come here, and for the other commissioners, and I, I honestly feel like I can't do that, um, because I, other than just sitting around on Thursday and doing nothing else. And, and I'm not trying to be critical, I'm just saying, I think, I, I'm hoping that there's a better way.
There's always a better way. We can, we can do that, and that's what I was saying, with, with this, after we make some phone calls and get ahold of some people, that would be wonderful. We may be able to make some adjustments and send that as well.
That would be wonderful.
Sure.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further comments or discussion on the budget? All right.
Can I, can I just go back to that really quickly? Sorry, no, I'm breaking.
No, you may, you may.
No, no, not that.
No, she wants this one.
Yeah, yeah, I just, I, since it was, so, the, thank you, Joanne, I, I just wanted to have closure here, so it, it turns out that it was, um, Censors was the SupplyHouse.com, um, saying for Matt, and I just wanted to say thank you for that, I just wanted to make sure that was on.
Got you.
The record, and, thank you, I appreciate it.
Censors like, censors, oh, censors with a C. Okay, thank you. I, I thought with a C, so it's censors with an S.
Censors with an S, yes, not censors.
Got it, got it, got it.
I was confused, it's all good. Sorry. Temperature is censors.
I'll wait for you to catch up, and I'll move on.
I just have to find it, I'll just make it up here.
No, we're not in a rush.
I am.
Okay.
I can only take you people for so long in one given evening. Oh, I did, is that my allowed voice?
You did say that.
Sorry.
No, I'm not. Strategic planning, um, I have some good news. Um, when I, when I said I wanted to put a strategic planning subcommittee together, I said I wanted to reach out to the, somebody to lead that subcommittee from the public, and, uh, we have a very strong leader from outside the, well, she lives in the district, but outside the board and outside the facility, who's going to lead our subcommittee, and that's Ms. Tara Hezon, um, has agreed to lead our subcommittee for our strategic planning. Um, and I thought that was needed so that it wasn't one of the members of the board, so that the public could feel free to come in and, and feel.
Yes.
Feel some, uh, latitude to come in and, and talk. Uh, I do need to appoint members from the board also to that subcommittee, and before I appoint anybody, I'd like to know if there's any interest to be on the strategic planning subcommittee. I have one, Donna Sue, all right?
That's why I wanted to be on this, because I want to be part of a strategic plan.
Okay, so I will appoint Donna Sue, and if nobody else would like to, if there are no objections, I'd like to appoint myself.
I would want to.
Is that all right?
Fabulous.
Okay.
You come with love and knowledge.
There's no, there's no objections. Um, I was also, when I'm talking to Tara, um, I, I want to, uh, I told her it was important to, for us to get members of the public on the subcommittee. So once again, I need to ask the staff to do some more work. Uh, update the website, please, and if we can ask for members of the public, and I would like that to go out by word of mouth, too. Anybody, whether they feel like they can contact the director or any member of the board, um, that would be fantastic. We're going to look for two to three members of the public. Yes, sir?
One recommendation, when we, when we go to, and I don't know how, how we're going to decide who in the public is part of that, that's right. I would like it to see, to see it be a very broad, uh, even if it's people that, that maybe, maybe don't agree with us.
Oh, definitely.
To get that, uh, to get that perspective, because it really is about going forward, we'd like to talk about it earlier, and, and I, I would like to recommend something to the labor.
Any other?
Would the chair be the person to appoint?
I, I do, I do appoint.
No, no, I mean, I mean the chair of that committee.
Actually, you're right, it would be chair, that would point, uh, no.
No?
No, all subcommittees are appointed by the board chair.
Okay.
But we can, if, if we want, we can def, uh, I don't know if there's, we, we can look into Robert's rules and make sure that there's nothing, and there's no reason why the board can't say, uh, ask that subcommittee chair to make that appointment. Why couldn't we do that? Unless there's a violation of Robert's rules, why couldn't we ask Tara to make that appointment?
That would be good.
I think it would be great, if we can, if it's allowable.
Yes, so we'll, we'll look, we'll research to make sure that's allowable, and if it is, we will ask Tara to ma, Ms. Hezon to make the appointment of the public.
What I love about that, I do, excuse me. Is then it takes away our opinions and our, because, you know, I, I, I would love that.
Yes.
I, I think, I mean, it seems like it would be in order that either you as the board chair, or that we would determine how many people would be on that.
So we can ask.
Or how are that.
What we'll do is we'll point two members of the public, two members of the board, Mrs. Hezon, and what I also wanted to ask for is a member from the chamber, if we could possibly get that, do you think it's possible?
Probably.
Could you ask if we can get one member of the chamber for it?
Of course, yeah, if you don't want to. I mean, I, I don't.
The director, the director's already on the board, we already said that in one of our former meet, last month's minutes.
No, what I meant was ask the chamber, I'm, I'm happy to do it, it, it's up to you. I can poke that.
Okay, so the board, so that subcommittee will be then hopefully a member of the chamber, um, two members of our board, uh, Mrs. Hezon, and then two members of the public that she appoints, and barring any circumstances otherwise, and then, of course, the director as previously stated. The other thing was, uh, three identifiable, identifiable goals for the subcommittee, and I'll rip these off and give these to you.
Thank you.
Because that's going to be a lot easier. So, um, what?
May I ask one other question?
Yes, sir.
Would it, would it be wrong to ask, uh, that, that we allow a, a young person, you know, a high school kid, for example, to be part of that, just?
What purpose?
Or to say, I think to get them involved in government, you know, I mean, I, you don't think so? I just, I just like that thought, I, I just like the thought of kids being involved, you know, this is their pool, too, and then the whole thought was going forward, they're in the district. Yeah, but don't forget, though, that the district was established for the purpose of one thing, and that was the taxing district was established to, to take care of this pool, we can never lose sight of that.
You are so, you are so wrong.
I am not wrong.
Yes, you are.
No, actually, I'm not.
Okay, well, let's, let's stay.
There was no pool, it was.
Stop, stop, hey, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to keep the focus on what we're talking about in strategic planning. If you guys want to talk about that during final discussion, that's fine, but now's not the time.
You're right.
So thank you very much. Strategic planning, the three goals that I want to give the strategic planning committee to work on is identify the needs of the district and evaluate if current programs, facilities, and operations will meet those needs. Evaluate the budget and the levy, and identify trends and shortcomings that will guide budget, capital improvement and development, and investment decisions for the district. Provide a framework for partnerships with other agencies, organizations, and businesses. Are there any comments or changes that the board would like to see to those three goals that I'm giving the subcommittee?
I, I would just have to say I don't know, because it would have been nice to, it would be nice to process that a little bit.
Once again, it would be nice to process, so I will send these out for review.
Oh, good.
And I will send them to Mrs. Hezon with, with the note that these, these, there may be changes coming from the board next month.
Yeah, I'd just like to process a little bit. Yeah, no, that would be great, because I think we talked about, um, short-term strategic and long-term strategic.
That's correct.
And, um, and I didn't, I didn't hear anything of that in there.
No.
Um, I'll, I'll wait until I.
We would have to find out, identify the needs first before we decide whether they're short-term and long-term. So the, the subcommittee is going to put the framework in place for the strategic plan, and then it's up for us to take the strategic plan that they put the framework together for and build one. We're not going to ask the public and the subcommittee to build the strategic plan.
So we believe this is a temporary subcommittee, then? I, I think I, I got a different impression.
Yeah, no, that's, there's good discussion, no, that's good discussion, um, it, it was not meant to be a, um, a, a subcommittee that actually drafts the strategic plan, but gives us the framework for the strategic plan.
Okay, but, sorry.
Because the policy and the strategic plan going forward would have to finally be voted on by the board.
Sure, sure, agree.
Right.
Agree, but I think I, I, perhaps I'm, sorry, I, I still don't feel like.
No, that's good.
I have a definitive answer to my question. So, so we believe that this subcommittee is, is a temporary exercise.
No, I'd like to see it be a constant, because a strategic plan's got to be a living, um, I'm going to use the wrong words here, um, a, a living document, because it's going to change based on the changes in our tax district, the changes in our population, the changes in the needs to the day, day-to-day. Capital improvements alone will change, if the boiler blows up tomorrow, I can't believe I said that out loud.
Yeah.
It's going to change automatically. So, I would like to see, maybe this, this subcommittee be a permanent subcommittee that goes on and consists, gives us guidance in the strategic plan that we, as a board, develop and vote on. And obviously, that strategic plan is going to have to be a living document that changes, and that subcommittee will guide those changes, I guess.
Okay, maybe I have to see all three together, because to me, the, the first one is identify the needs of the district. That just sounds, that sounds temporary to me. That doesn't, it either, either that or it has to be periodic.
Oh, it would have-
Annually, right?
Yeah.
So, I'm, I'm, I'm being very structured, because to me, part of it is if we're going to charge these people, including these people, but with doing that, that we need to be very specific about what we're asking for. Sorry, I was, I was about to fight with the what. I totally did. You know? Well, no.
But I think the subcommittee could change, too. I see what you're saying.
And I, I'm just trying to make sure.
And so, I don't know, you know, and I, I don't know if I can, we can ask others from the outside to be a permanent, you know, part of that if they don't want to give that much time, so.
Absolutely.
I think it's something we're going to have to evolve, it'll evolve, and-
And, and looking at that, I think part of it is, if it's temporary, then it's ensuring that we know when they're done. Right? That if these are your three objectives, we know when you're done. Otherwise, it's, well, we could still do this, or we think this changes, or, I'm trying to make sure that we understand that there's a beginning and an end.
Yes.
And, and that we're clear on what those deliverables are, what, or what have you, results of whatever.
Reenactment.
Yeah, so.
Yes, please.
I totally see something, this is, I haven't been working on a presentation, and I'm looking at these, actually, I'm working on my values in an organization, but I have a, a strategy, and I just repeated a lot, a clear plan, time and market-based, that describes the path by which an organization intends to reach its vision. Strategy determines such things as resource priorities, organizational structure, and what issues get daily organizational attention. It's nice and simple.
Yes.
So.
Yeah, I'm very uncontextual.
I was just trying to drag the child.
Oh, excellent.
Yeah, it's, like, things converge.
So, we can work that into these, and I think this is a good framework for us to build on next month, when we actually meet with, I'll ask Tara to come next month.
Cool.
And maybe we can move forward.
Cool. That's great.
All right, excellent. All right, any other discussion? We now, we mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, we were going to have to move the executive session around due to particular problems, issues, and Ms. Brandt has shown up, so we are now going to move into executive session.
Excuse me, sorry to interrupt.
No.
I'm not aware of that exception. Just wait, hold me a second.
What's that?
I'm pretty familiar. Do you need to talk?
Yeah.
I'll do it here.
Okay. And I'm not fully aware of that.
I'm getting, you have a good show.
Do you need to, or?
No, 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 we're going to go into, no, we're going into executive session to discuss with our, our lawyer, litigation, our insurance company litigation. So, that's why we're going into executive session. We moved that piece around in the meeting to when she got here.
Also, if you want me to tell me when you plan to leave the meeting.
Yes, we will. I haven't gotten there.
Are you planning to make a decision tonight about anything?
No.
Okay.
So, no decision can be made in executive session.
I'm so sorry to-
No, 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 we don't.
To things, sort of being on the agenda, saying that actually quoting the statute is pretty normal.
Oh, okay. Okay. Steve, do you have the statute with you?
I do.
All right. I'll quote it.
Does that, does that, is it?
Yes?
I'm sorry, so when did you say you planned to leave the meeting?
I don't know yet. I've got to look at the lady that's sitting right behind you and ask her, how much time do we need, Cheryl?
Um, 20 minutes.
20 minutes. So, I'll go, 20 minutes, because we can go over, but we can't go under, as per the Public Meeting Act, so. And I'll give you a statute in just a second. Or I'll go find the statute, because we do have it in the office, and-
One, I just give you a copy for that.
Thanks. Case, the life size, health size is now up to six.
So, was it reported? You already put it.
Wait a minute, three real estate, performance public bids.
Name it, Sid.
110, 42-30.110, paragraph I.
Hey, here it is, mother.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve.
Okay, so-
So, hold on, I was, we are going to go into executive-
Did you say RC 42.30.110?
Yes, paragraph I.
Paragraph I, yeah.
It is now 8:15. We're going to go into executive session for 20 minutes. So, at 8:35, we will either come back, or we will let you know, hopefully, how much longer it will be, so.
Are they both recording?
They are, they are both recording. Erica, I'll call a meeting back in order. All right, we'll call a meeting back in order at 8:46. And I have a clarification, I misspoke. So, Cheryl Brandt, while not an attorney, is the chief risk officer. She's in charge of the attorneys for our-
Litigation.
All litigation involving the district, so, for the insurance company. So, that's who she is. I misspoke. So, thank you for having Cheryl clarify. All right. Program review is the next business item, program review from Commissioner Holly and Hoffmeyer.
Singleton.
Singleton.
I Y, Commissioner Holly and Singleton.
And, we've been busy doing other stuff, so we don't have much progress made, but I hope to talk to all the program heads this coming week, and then turn to focus groups. And I also am close to having the questionnaire that we want to have answered by people, which will help the focus group come up with what we want the programs to be and stuff.
So, next month, we'll actually have a report from the subcommittee on where we currently stand with the progress.
On public inputs, as well as numbers.
Okay, yes, hopefully. All right.
That's our expectation.
Okay.
If you guys need some help with the board, and we do have one that you probably can tweak.
I've been told that before, and nobody gave it to me, even though I asked for it several times.
I emailed it to you from my personal email. Did you receive it?
I did not receive it.
Okay, I'll, I'll turn on it.
Okay.
We'll get it.
All right, kayaks.
You need to do step three. Which you guys were all emailed, the step-by-step process for disposing of dispossessed property. So, we have step one and two. We are now needing to go to step three process.
I got that, but I got to me, hold on, one, it's right here. No? It's right here. Matt?
I got it, turn it out, I did it for you.
It's so precious, old budget. She did, she went to give it, yes.
Okay, you, you want to know, we talked about is the kayaks that were surplus, that's what you're talking about.
I'm going to need it.
We bought new kayaks, and the old kayak, was there?
The old kayak, yeah, the old kayaks, we have to, we talked about-
Basically lays out how we're supposed to have to declare surplus, that's what she's talking about.
Yeah.
So, people, you want to know, that's it.
Is that what you're right, people just call us back for it now?
Yeah, you can't do that, yeah. Taxpayer money, we're not allowed to do that, so. We had to research, and you can't sell them, you can't just offer them up for sale, and there's actually the states-
It's pretty, yeah.
I was going to say, I have people throw in the garbage for so much trouble. We're at seven years old, so you throw them away.
Yeah.
But why would you do that when you, oh, yeah, these kayaks are going to have to crash several-
It's not ours to throw away.
Well, yeah, yeah.
You know, if you look at it, yeah. I know what Shane's saying, and I totally get it.
It's, it's different than like the most-
You guys don't pay taxes, if you're sort of paid taxes, and you depreciated, your public ended to pay taxes, if you depreciated it out of the seven years, you could have started a new one, without getting into a weird tax world. Whatever the seven-year depreciation type is, I can't recall the exact name.
Maybe, yes.
Wendy probably knows, did all that stuff?
You, you got me up, yeah. I mean, I understand, I, it's just, you know, this is the process that was prescribed for us. Actually, it took a while for us to under, or it took a while for them to figure out what, because we're a special purpose district, on what the disposition process was. But for us, that was part of the decision, the purchase was based on the revenue recovery for disposition.
Exactly.
So, we're ready, we just need to know what to do.
Yes, I did.
So did I. Tell you, if you, if you want to take kayak classes, he is the guy. He is amazing. He's the guy, I want to trip with him, we ended up over like Popeye or Skaggs or I don't know, he's like, you can kiss, you can kiss. He's like a former SEAL, I believe, was he?
SEAL Team Two.
Yeah, so.
He was a commander, he was actually a commander.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, we had, we had fun.
You know, he, for you and anybody else, you know, he, Pete Stevens, our kayak instructor here, he also was a kayak constructor for the Navy, also a kayak constructor for Skaggs about, he is a, a, a stringing fellow.
What, basically, double that, or, or, yeah.
And is he a candidate, or not?
No, the main concern is that.
Okay. Two, three. It's okay, don't worry about it. Don't worry about it. Read over to Cheryl.
And you said you've done the first two steps?
We've done the first two steps, so we need to do step three.
Okay.
So, we have to do a notice of intent to sell surplus property.
You have to, you have to declare that we're going to do a notice of intent to sell our surplus property. And then, we have to provide the advertisement, therefore, of surplus property.
And it has to be in our building, on our website, with, with the News Times, and at the courthouse down in Coopville.
Courthouse down in Coopville, and the courthouse here.
Okay, and the courthouse here in Oak Harbor.
Yes.
All right.
And we have those advertisements ready.
So, I won't read, um-
Can, can we make sure this stuff is, is all, I wait, shade in this, the process?
Can you just direct that it happens? We need to do a motion?
What, the kids waiting for a motion? Or, or you know?
I think I'm going to need a motion. I would, I would like to see us do a motion, because to me, that would be more transparent, it would be, you know.
You know, there's no reason not to.
10 days from, if we do it today, 10 days from today would be the 27th.
Thank you very much. So, we just want to do it 10 days from tomorrow, because-
I'm sorry, tomorrow will be the 27th.
So, you need a motion, then?
You know, I, I don't know if we need one, but I'd, I'd like to say, let's, let's make one.
Make a motion, then, that we, that we follow this process for sale of the dispossessed property concerning the kayaks, as outlined in the, in this, the, uh-
I believe we already, we already did that. We just need to make a motion specific to step three.
Okay. I would make a motion, then, that we would proceed with step three of the process for sale of dispossessed property concerning the kayak.
Okay, so we have a-
It is, can we read it out loud?
We've got a motion to proceed with step three, which states, NWPRD publishes a notice of intent to sell surplus property. This must be done at least once a week for two weeks. We must post this notice in our building, on our website, with the newspaper, and at the courthouse here in Oak Harbor and in Coopville. The notice must particularly describe the property to be sold, and must designate the date, time, and place when a public hearing will be held on the notice. This date of this hearing must be at least 10 days after the notice is first published in the paper.
Are we going to specify, then, when this date is?
So, at the very least, it has to be on the 27th.
If it gets published in the paper, then that will, by Saturday?
So, if it goes in the paper by Saturday, then we have till the 28th. So.
We can get it on Saturday?
So, the date for the special meeting will be once, 10 days from the-
Then it hits the papers on the first.
So, you, you want to amend that motion to the date 10 days from when it-
To make a motion till-
The date of the hearing must be, I don't like making-
10, 10 days after the publication in the paper of the intent to sell.
So, we're going to amend that, I would amend that, amend the motion to 10 days after it's published in the, with the News Times?
Correct.
And then I would like to amend the motion that the 10 days would be after the, the first day that it is published in the, with the News Times.
Very good. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Don't we actually have to specify a date? Don't we have to pick a date today? Because you have to say, we have to say in the paper when it's going to be.
You do.
So, should we put, as part of the motion, should be the exact date that we want it to be?
It, and here's the good thing, it says at least.
Yeah, so it could be anytime after the 28th, including the evening of the 28th, or anytime thereafter, or on the 28th.
I think that honestly, to be on the safe side, I think we assume Wednesday. We would assume Wednesday, and I have the same thought.
Agreed.
If it is on Saturday, that would be phenomenal, if we cannot have Wednesday.
Great, let's just, let's assume, let's assume the 22nd-
Oh, okay.
Is, is the initial notice date, because it is no fewer than 10 days.
Yes.
So, we assume the 22nd, we had 10 days to that, that would be May 2nd. So, anytime May 2nd or after, but we have to pick a day, right?
Yeah.
That's correct? Okay, so, let's pick a day.
Where? May 2nd to Wednesday.
May 2nd is a Saturday.
Yes.
So, it would be sometime 4th, 5th, 6th, 7th, 8th, more than likely. I'm, I'm assuming we're, we're not expecting a public meeting on the weekend, but, okay. So, I think Sean has probably the most, the least flexible schedule.
The 4th or 5th of May would work, or the 8th of May would work that week. Question?
4th is a Tuesday?
4th is a Monday.
4th, 5th is a Tuesday, and the 8th is a Friday.
Oh, you can do it in the evening, or during the day?
I'd like to do, I would say we've done all of ours in the evening, that way it gives people that work a chance to come and make, and the whole idea here is to hear concerns.
Then any of those days work for me?
I'm good.
Steve?
May 4th, May 5th is for the buyer.
Okay.
But you're going to begin on the number?
Well, I thought you might want to.
There we go.
Okay, so, May 4th works for you, Monday?
I'll make it work.
So, the date of the meeting, public hearing, will be on May 4th.
7:00 PM?
Yes, ma'am.
10:00 here?
Here at the pool.
You have to make a motion there?
I don't.
I would like to amend the motion, that that public hearing is May 4th at 7:00, at 7:00 PM, here at the John Venners at Memorial Pool.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. I will wait for a minute.
Go ahead.
Okay, further discussion. We have a list of the property, and my question is to the director, we do have a list that will go out with the notice, that will describe everything. Okay, fantastic. All right, any other further discussion?
I have a concern, Cheryl, now are you now at, whichever?
Go ahead.
Awesome. Have you guys consulted the survey?
Yeah, that's why we're doing it.
So, have to get it all signed, and will they be signing the survey, link the whole harness? The reason I ask, Port of Seattle sold the, God, where the heck that boat to Sunken Pop Fire was described for $2,000, and it sinks, cost to state $20 million. They went after the Port of Seattle for the money. Kayaking's very dangerous, somebody by the kayak gets killed because they don't know what they're doing. District gone. District law.
We are doing all of this under the direction of our attorney.
It's a good question, and input from the public, so we'll, we'll go ahead and forward those concerns on the nation.
Yep, yep.
Thank you.
Yeah.
In terms of the, um, sorry, a good discussion here of the notice, um, the, um, agenda, suggestion is to limit comments to 3A side. Is that our intent, is to follow number four?
We have had a very, um, liberal, I would say, when it comes to public comment, um, we've never limited, you know, I mean, we take comments in the middle of our meetings, which we don't have to do, you know? And, um, what, how does the board feel about that, since we're talking about it during the motion?
You know, we, um, the, our policy for meetings is to limit to 10 people for three minutes. I wonder if they meant, limit to three minutes, if we, okay, I say, let's just limit it to three minutes, and then say, i- i- if it's signed up and there, it seems like an, we're not gonna get through it for 10 hours, then it would be like, you know, we probably should limit it. But I, I think the, the number of people who are gonna be truly interested in what we're doing is not gonna be that big of a number, they're not gonna hopefully think we're doing anything underhanded or bad. And so I, I agree with you, we're a small district, let's let everyone have their say. And then, but limited to three minutes, perhaps.
So comments are limited to three minutes?
Per, per our regular meeting?
Yes.
Rules. Okay.
So we would have public comment, and then, um, our discussion about the tracks would be the purpose?
We would have to unanimously decide to sell the boats after public comment. So it would be a special meeting here, public, public comment, after which we would have to...
We would have to discuss and vote on them.
If, if then, if then, motions on the table, we would have to...
Yeah, then, then you would go to how you were going to sell them, and that is spell that, how we must do that as well.
Right, I'm just making sure that we have, all have the same expectation of what that agenda is gonna look like. That's all.
Any further comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. All right, kinds of staff reports.
Is there anything on any of the staff reports that you guys would like a little bit more information on? They're fairly self-explanatory, and are more than happy to clarify anything you'd like. Instead of pouring you ad nauseam with a long list of things you've completed already.
When do we expect your reconciliation to be completed?
I would need a reconciliation.
All of the above. If, if we, if we, if we have to, here's, here's the thing, is, is, if we have to broach things like that, then I think we need a list that says, here's all the stuff we're doing, here's when we intend to have it done, by. Or we need to say, we expect to have it all done by the state. I, I would not, I would feel comfortable with that.
Reconciliations are ongoing, though. Every month we're gonna have two of them.
Well, okay, so, so let's break it down into two...
That's my question.
Okay, but, but then the real, then the real thing is, is to separate the activity into two, into actually three things right now. One of them is posting of our current accounts, and that should be ongoing. Okay. The other one is the 2014 reconciliation, so they understand it. So, and, and that was a special activity that should have a completion date. And then thirdly, we're also working on the budget for 2015, and, and amending that. And so instead of lumping all those things together, the 2014 reconciliation, when do we expect to have that completed?
So is the 2014 reconciliation for receivables?
Yes. That one's, that one's just about done.
Well, and the, it's the age receivables, and we were waiting for tax season to be over, so that Ron would have time to help us through that portion of it, with those older ones that go back as far as like 2011. So now the tax season has ended, I think, he said it on the phone, and he said to contact me at this week beginning next week.
Okay.
And it's not gonna be a very long process, just we really need guidance, so that we don't...
Sure, and that's fine.
...find the waters of...
So, okay, so to be very specific, we expect to finish the 2014 reconciliation by the end of the month?
Well, I hope so.
Okay, well, I, I, I feel like we're talking to generalities, and I would really appreciate specifics, so that we can say, done.
Right, because we have power to have it done by the end of the month.
You know what, a target is a target, and we're shooting for it. If there are reasons why we don't, at least then we'll understand it. What are the extenuating circumstances?
We will shoot for the end of the month.
Okay. Um, in terms of then, our monthly reconciliations, are we, so the last, but, the, um, the last numbers that we saw were through March 15th. Are we still about three weeks behind, or where are we at?
These numbers provided today aren't through March 31st.
Okay.
So...
So, yeah, it sounds like we're about three months, three weeks behind.
Well...
Well, some of the April stuff has been entered, but this is for your March meeting, so this is only dated through...
Absolutely. Which is, which is what I would expect to see, but I think that there was a concern in terms of if we were lagging on postings. And so are we, are we, are we about where we wanna be, or are we still a little bit behind?
We're about where we wanna be.
Okay.
So we've, we've got a good start in April.
Considering all the additional items that I was tasked with to pull together for this meeting, I think I'm actually gonna be a little ahead of where I want to be, so I should be fully caught up at the same midweek.
And so our general expectation is that we'd be posting about, by about like seven days or so?
I try to have about a week.
Okay, yeah, that's gonna, that sounds about right. Usually she's, she's right out about that.
It, it's just helpful for us to, it's helpful for me to understand where we're at, with all that. Um, okay, and then the budget, we obviously have, have that discussion. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Coach Taylor talked about, our new dryland program is slated to commence tomorrow. Arrangements have been made to secure the equipment needed for the dryland at no expense of the district. What equipment, from where, where is it gonna be housed?
Uh, when I asked, Coach and I had talked about this just, just very briefly and in passing, he says he has some equipment that he has used previously in other employment, other places that he's been, that he's, that was supposed, it's being shipped out here from...
Okay, so what stuff he has?
It's stuff that he has, and it's being shipped out here, it hasn't arrived yet.
Okay.
Stuff that he has used, I don't know specifically what it is, like, this was a conversation he and I had two days ago, and it was just in passing.
Okay.
We can find out specifically what it is, um, and we can get back to you on that. I can ask him to email me specifically what it is, but it is stuff that he has and that he has used with other teams.
Okay. And where is he planning to put it? Do you know?
I don't know. We do have some storage areas for him, I mean, we do have a shed, we do have the trailer.
I, I assumed it's some kind of, you know, weight equipment or something, but it's like, do you know what it is?
It's stretch cords, kickboards, stuff like that, maybe.
He's also got parents building boxes, you know, so they can do like plyometrics, chopping up and down, stuff.
That's awesome.
Yeah, and so the parents are building it, buying the wood and everything else, and they're painting it and donating it to the district.
That's a good thing to know, thank you.
You're welcome. And their parents that actually know what they're doing with hand tools.
Very cool.
So...
Uh, can I back up just for one moment? Back to the director, number six, continue to review the current employee handbook. Uh, one of the things, they got a lot of them emailed to us this week, specifically had to do with pay raises. And, you mean CBS?
I did.
Something you saw.
I did.
And what it had to do is, it was very sick, you work here this long, we get this raise.
Okay.
So a, a member of the public had brought that up, and I just kinda wanted to know, what point in time are we gonna talk about that? You know, because if that's not what we're going to do, then we'll need to change the employee handbook, that they're...
That is correct.
That they're eligible, or how, you know, doesn't, doesn't it get guaranteed, you know, the...
There are, there, I have come to that chapter in the book, and there are several things that I would like to, uh, see a subcommittee or somebody who would be willing from the board to help address some of these, because I do think that there are some policies that will need to be, if not necessarily changed, but an adjustment made. And I think that as we move forward in getting this handbook, I think we do need to have some type of adjustments made to some of these pay raises. Some of these people are already at the maximum that they can be paid for their department, which the employee handbook does address, if they can't go beyond that maximum. There are also areas in there where it is not really specific for different, different positions.
Look, what we're doing is reviewing the policies, you're making noted changes or suggestions, and then the board will have a special meeting, where we don't need a subcommittee, because any changes to the handbook would be a change to policy, and we'd need the full attention of the entire board.
I think that what the conversation had been had previously was that there would be somebody who would be willing to, and I believe Donna Sue was the one that had volunteered herself, to sit down and help with the review.
Oh, okay.
That needs to be a subcommittee, whether she could just...
Yeah, and you know, profit, I mean, profit's pretty evident, I mean, when you look at that employee handbook, I mean, I mean, you know, if it says you get a raise here, you get a raise there. You know, if it's all continued upon your performance review, that's, that's different.
It's very big.
Well, this is very concrete. If you work here this long, this is what you get. And we've not been following that.
It's so many hours, and you get 25 cents, and then every two years, you get a cost of living adjustment.
You know, that, yeah.
Yeah, so again, as you were saying, we need to review it for retroactive action, as well as we need to review it in, in terms of for any either amendment or adoption. However, I do believe that while it has not maybe been strictly followed, it has, there have been adjustments made. We have had several employees that have had adjustments made to their pay over the last year.
Okay.
Yeah.
Let's do this, let's appoint a subcommittee, the director and Commissioner Holly, and move the employee handbook to unfinished business for next month, and also, is this a separate item? Will that work?
Yeah, it will, thank you.
Okay.
I'm really looking forward to getting into that, since you need some more.
I'll come talk to you tomorrow.
And then, if, if you go to the coaches report, I, I have a couple of questions. And it had to do with, that's on number weekly, okay, we're gonna write that, brand-new practice schedule is a place. Keep in mind that we, the board, approve, approve the schedule of the pool. Our swimmers may not practice at any time, seven days, at any time, seven days a week. What does that mean? Just shut the lights off.
That might have been a hint.
I've never heard that before.
That, that is not a correct statement, that swimmers may not practice at any time they may practice when they are scheduled to practice.
And the schedule times have not changed, it's just the scheduled times for groups.
There is one, um, we have a space on Sunday mornings where we didn't have anything going on, and I, we were saying, well, we do have to review it, we do have to approve it. We do have a normal time there, we have a lot of different groups that come in on Sunday mornings, so...
Okay. So what you're saying is it's not seven days a week?
He does have practice times that are seven days a week. He has practice time Sunday through Saturday. The one that, that has to be approved by the board before it can be set in stone.
Well, I would share a concern with some of these, only because they already get a swim six days a week. And I think the message it sends to the public is clear, that, that, you know, that once again, uh, yeah.
We will need a formal change of schedule.
That is exactly, that is exactly right.
I, I know I've asked this question before, I was gonna go, um, because we were originally supposed to approve a new schedule in February, um, it was said we're going to put that off, and I thought it was for April, was it May?
We need, we need to get the summer schedule done. We have a template, it needs to be approved, we have the, we have a template that we would like to just make a few little adjustments to. We do probably need to do it in May, however, I might put out a suggestion that you guys add that to the agenda for your early May special meeting.
How does the board feel about that?
We do need to get the summer schedule out sooner rather than later.
I would like, if I may, I would like to see, what, if we have a template out there, and one thing we talked about, Commissioner Singleton talked about earlier, was putting things out for everybody to look at. Let's put it out there, not only just for the board to look at, but for public comment.
Absolutely, and we can email that to you.
That'd be great. And if we could put, um, put it, another, I'm sorry, another thing to do, but if we could put that on the website?
Yeah, absolutely.
And ask people to review it?
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, it's their pool.
Yeah.
It's their district, and that way, they can give us the feedback we need to make the decision on that schedule. That would be awesome. I think May would be a better time at a regularly scheduled meeting.
We do have a rough draft of it, so we can definitely do that.
And not to heart, there are two sentences here, our swim families are now receiving full routing for their money.
Yeah.
The opportunity to practice team wide is nearly doubled. I, if I'm a member of the public and I read that, that's very, very offensive, actually. You know, and, I mean, I, I, yeah, and operating practice team wide is nearly doubled, almost sounds like now the kids are swimming twice as much, still paying the same amount of money.
Yeah.
And I would just caution him to kind of, yeah, you know...
Because I, I think, I'm sorry.
Because they, I think they, you know, the, the eight years we were, well, seven years we were involved with them, I, I don't think that by and large, there may have been a point in time where I was, I was angry or something. But for the most part, during that seven years, we got our bank account up, and, and thanks to the taxpayers for, for, you know, for, for what they do, you know?
And I, I believe that the parents would agree with that. I mean, I, I know as a, as a parent myself, I feel like I'm definitely getting my bank account up.
Change lives, I believe that.
I agree. And I, I believe the comment about the, the opportunity to practice team wide has to do with the consolidation that you referred to, is that correct?
That is correct, yeah.
So that we, we're using the, the same amount of time more efficiently to put more bodies potentially in the pool.
He has, he has done a phenomenal job of consolidating these teams, and doing it to the point where he has been able to juggle these, to juggle these kids and juggle these groups, where he is able, with a few little time adjustments to his afternoon, and I mean, I, I told him, I said, you have 2:45 to 5:30, what are you doing there, your business? He's been able to get these kids coming in at times, and he's been able to handle these large groups as they're swapping in and out very well, and I've been very impressed with the multitasking that he's been able to do out there.
Please understand, the comments are not made to tear down, especially, I mean, try to...
Gotcha.
I wanted to be successful.
Yeah, he's, uh, he's doing, he's doing a lot, doing a lot for the team, so far very, very impressed.
Any other questions or comments on the staff reports? I do, I was gonna say, I do have to read the employee of the month in the public record, it's for Carlos Patlin. As a lifeguard, Carlos has been instrumental in keeping the deck safe, Carlos has willingly taken on extra shifts covering for employees who are sick or unable to cover their shifts. Carlos is always willing to help in any way he can, and is a favorite with both morning and evening customers. Carlos's smile and happy demeanor makes the workplace brighter, and his leadership has proven him helpful as we train new staff. Thank you, Carlos, for all that you do.
Thank you, Carlos.
Commissioner Singleton, did I cut you off there?
No, I just said, thank you, Carlos.
Oh, I, I just had a question about a public record request. Um, do we have, for the, for the two that are, um, over, I would say, over 30 days old, do we have expected completion dates for those, or...
One, let me think, one of those, I actually just yesterday got the last bits and pieces, I did not have time to compile it and to send off today. And then, the other one I hope to have wrapped up by the end of next week, it's apparently extensive one, that's written on our, in our digging and paper files. Thank you.
May I ask you a question on public record requests, Ms. Burt? Are we following the, you know, the law's very specific, that once it's turned in, you have five days to give them, uh, take an estimated reasonable time, I think, so it's, are we doing that? Because I know it wasn't done in the past.
What they're forgetting is an acknowledgement of receipt, and then they have been receiving consistent weekly updates on where I am on it. Last week I did not get updates out, unfortunately, so I'm a little...
But the one that required us to give updates as much is precisely one thing, and that is that you have five days, not counting the day that you get it, but counting the day that they get. We have to give them an estimated time of, we believe reasonable estimated time of completion. We think it's going to take, you know, four weeks.
Right.
We have to do that. We're bound by law to do that. The updates are nice, but that's really not as important, it's not set in stone as much. We can give updates, but the only thing set in stone is that five days.
And we have been answering in five days, correct? Okay.
Well, that we received it, that have we been telling them, we think it's going to take this long, that's what...
When I can give them an estimate, yes.
That's what we, we, by our policy and by the RCW, we are required to do that.
See, I need to review that because I feel like maybe I read the policy a little differently.